It's five o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order, please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, roll call please, Jason.
Sarah Sarda.
Here.
Terry Crandall.
Here.
Kathy Greenaway.
Merry Christmas.
Fran and Kiefer.
Here.
Jill Sternquist.
Here.
Alright, we have a quorum, moving on to the approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda before us.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes, agenda is approved, moving on to number three, the approval of the minutes from the November fourteenth school board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November fourteenth, uh, school board meeting, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes, minutes are approved, uh, moving on approval or the conflict of interest, does anyone have any conflict of interest? Okay, hearing none, moving on to the consent agenda, any items that anyone would like to pull off?
I'd like to remove item H from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, letter H. Any other ones? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda with the removal of H.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, with the exception of item H.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please, Jason.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Crandall?
Yes.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes, alright, letter H. Uh, Mr. Crandall, would you like to?
I would, I'd just like to, Donna Wagner is not here this evening, but I'd like to say something about her. She's been, she's been thirty-three years, she's retiring. And she spent thirty-three years as a kindergarten teacher, twenty-five of those at Lincoln School. I'd like to recognize her achievement in doing so, and let's give her all in absentia a round of applause. And I move we approve item H.
Second.
Alright, motion and a second, any discussion? I think we all echo Mr. Crandall's words, so thank you to Donna. Uh, roll call please.
Crandall?
Yes.
Sarda?
Yes.
Sternquist?
Yes.
Greenaway?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes, um, public comment, Mr. Beetz, do we have any?
No, we do not.
No one up there, moving on to, uh, one of my favorite parts, the good news and student achievements, so we have Mr. D. Looks like you're going first.
I'll go first, good evening, uh, so, a couple things on some YHS happenings going on, we had winter formal on Saturday night, we had over four hundred and fifty students, uh, attended our winter formal dance, and, uh, just a great turnout, kids had a lot of fun. We did something that was a little different than we've done in the past, we have a student that is interested in going, a senior student going into, uh, music production, and so forth, and she volunteered or wanted to help out with the DJing, so our student council, Mr. Topol, our student council representative, uh, or chaperone, he wanted to, he asked about this, said you bet, so, she was in and she was able to help, and our, our students had a great time with, uh, her playing the, the, with the, uh, being the DJ, and it was something that, uh, turned out really, really great, like I said, having over four hundred and fifty students, uh, walked through the doors was fantastic for, um, Saturday night, and I know that there was a lot of things that were going around in the community that day as well, so it was just a, a great showing for our winter formal. Uh, next thing too, we have a semester test coming up, uh, will be next week, uh, we have a schedule that we have, uh, some longer periods. We have periods one through four, that'll be, um, extended periods on the twentieth, and then periods five through seven will be on the twenty-first. Each of those days, we have an extended homeroom, which is a lot of fun for our teachers to, uh, work with their homerooms, and celebrate the semester, and celebrate some of the things that, that they've been doing, uh, throughout the year as well. And then, lastly, just to go on, tomorrow, we have scheduled, uh, with the Department of Labor and within our internship program, um, I believe we have over forty, uh, people coming in to help hold some mock interviews for our intern, uh, students and our internships, we're looking forward to doing that. Last year, we did kind of the same thing, and we actually had, um, a handful of students that walked away with job offers on the table as they, they were going through with the mock interviews, so, we're excited for that, and that's some things that have been going on at YHS, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. D? Alright, thank you, exciting. Alright, Mr. Davidson.
Um, good evening, the first thing that I want to share from YMS is our Christmas concert that happened last week. Uh, we had the sixth graders, the seventh and eighth grade bands, as well as the jazz band perform. Um, Ms. Belkum and all the, the students did a great job with that, um, there was even a sing-along at the end, a deck the halls sing-along with all the audience, so that was really cool. Um, we're in the middle of our thirteen days of Christmas, um, a couple highlights from that, um, for the staff especially, our parent group, our SYMS group is sponsoring, um, a treat for the staff, as well as some T-shirts, um, for them later this week. Um, a favorite amongst the staff and students has been, um, the school-wide joke contest we did last week. Um, it's a big hit in between class periods, um, so that was, that was fun. Um, the last thing is our YMS good news postcards that teachers are going to be sending out to, um, students for sharing good news. Um, Dr. Olson has challenged all the staff members to try to send five a month to try to, um, communicate to parents all the positive things that are going on. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Why thirteen days? Have fourteen or twelve?
I think because we started last Monday, and it was thirteen till Christmas break. Thank you.
And Mr. Crandall?
Yes, sir.
I asked the same thing.
Uh, no, I was, uh, at that band concert, and that gymnasium was packed, so it's, uh, exciting to see the music alive and well in the district, so, thanks for the update on the middle school. Um, it is getting time for the legislative session to get going, every year, we invite our, um, representatives to, um, come and kind of share a dialogue, so, I would welcome, um, Senator Gene Hunoff and Representative Mike Stevens and Representative Julie Ock to come if they are present. Oh, you drew the short straw, Mike, you're first.
I think she should both come up here and do that, uh, I actually thought we were on the agenda seven, the good news part.
Well, that depends, what's the percentage? No, truly, thank you guys for being here.
Well, this, uh, will be starting on January tenth, uh, will be their legislative session, we have a thirty-eight day session, and, uh, which, um, you know, when you look at it from the standpoint of what we do in the legislature, sometimes it takes a long time to get to where you're gonna go, sometimes it's a lot quicker, uh, but it's where you end up is really what counts. And, uh, this year's gonna be very interesting, uh, we have, from the House standpoint, uh, we have completely new leadership across the board, from a majority leader, uh, Will Mortenson from Pierre, Taylor Ahefeld from Sioux Falls, Hugh Bartles is the speaker, and I'm Speaker Pro Tem, we have five different new whips. Uh, I'll be serving on judiciary, as well as Chairman of Education for the House this time. Uh, we have, of the seventy members in the House, uh, twenty-eight of them have never served in the legislature. And so that's a real change, but we have, from an education standpoint, on the committee, uh, for example, we have Roger DeGroot, who was former superintendent at Brookings, Melissa Herrmann, who was, uh, been the chairman of the school board, also at Brookings, as we have some people, I think, really great from that standpoint of the education, looking at it from legislative type of thing, you know, really from the standpoint of what bills have been presented, there really hasn't been any, I mean, you hear a lot of rumors about this, or rumors about that, you know, only thing that we really know for sure so far is the governor has talked about a five percent increase for state aid, which is good, and she's had a couple other things, for example, uh, providing full tuition for people who are in the National Guard, and I think that's a really great thing. So really, at this point, I think in our process, we're really looking at concepts more than specifics, and a lot of the different things that you've read about, you know, you hear about the concepts, but really, particularly Gene and appropriations is, you know, really you get down into the details as to what it actually is, and you determine whether or not that's something that we, uh, you know, in the time that I have been in this legislature, when it first started in twenty twelve, you know, there's barely funds to cover hardly anything at all, and of course, a ten percent cut, I was on the school board, was a devastating thing that we've never, ever recovered from. They can, we can talk about different percentages, but when you go back ten, you're only going up three and five, it doesn't add up to where we're at, and so that's always a constant thing that we're always looking at, trying to deal with, and of course, with all the federal money that's come across, that's really, and I'm just speaking for myself, is really, is it really a difficult thing to, uh, try to determine, particularly when you're trying to, um, estimate what our, our economy is really doing, you know, I kind of treat it somewhat like, you know, you, you put drugs in your body, there's a period of time where it takes for them to get out of your body. And with all the federal funds, I'm not sure, I have not been convinced that anybody's been able to tell me, are we, has that gone through our system where we can then accurately determine what our real economy is? And because there's a lot of legislation that's being proposed that's talking about significant amount of millions of dollars to be, you know, we're gonna cut here, we're gonna do this and do that, well, you know, we know what it's like to try to add even a half percent sales tax to anything, or cutting type of things, that can be really a devastating thing all the way across. So it's really the details that you have to be really concerned about, and, and that's one of the things that we're looking at, I know that being on appropriations, that's one of the things she really looks at. There's a, a piece of legislation that the governor has proposed about providing scholarships for foster, foster kids, and that's something that I'm real concerned about, because to me, it's like a voucher type. So that's, I think she's talking about fifteen million dollars over three. That's something to be watching very carefully. I do want to say, at least from my standpoint, and I'm sure Gene would say the same thing, we really appreciate the comments that get input that you send us. You know, as I've said this before, when people have contacted me about things, don't send me a form letter. I'm not gonna read the form letter, you know, fifty of those, and, you know, just somebody's name on it, that doesn't really tell me anything. But I really appreciate what you, the board mayors have done, as well administrators, is you give us some very specific facts, this is how this would affect us. And, and so just a list of Sam boat, no on this, yes on that, really doesn't help when you're trying to talk to your other legislators as far as trying to get them to support or not support something, but being very specific has always been very helpful. Um, and, you know, when we look at anywhere from five to six hundred bills, any type of year, and of course, we don't see all of those. But, you know, when you're watching the specific ones, that's very helpful, just on something that's coming up, or particularly how that might affect, you know, not only Yankton, but Gayville, Valen, and Irene Wakanda.
Paulus. Thank you so very much for the invite, and I want to start by saying thank you to all of you. You know, I was thinking on my way here, Yankton School District is a challenge for me when I'm in Pierre and sitting on appropriations, because Yankton has one of the top programs in the state of South Dakota and what we do for our students. But I have a hundred and forty-six other school districts that are not at that level or anywhere near it. And so when I'm talking, I'm always talking about the great things that you do here, and so that's my mindset, and I always have to figure, not everybody is where Yankton is at, and so that becomes a challenge, but that also says so much for what you all do in the leadership of the board, your administrative, and more importantly, it's the teachers at that level. I don't, you know, there is not a day in appropriations that we don't hear about kids and school behaviors and the challenges that you all have, and I can only empathize with you and say thank you, because you are making a definite difference for our kids, not hitting everyone, and that's not your role, but you are making a difference, so I say thank you, because you put in long hours, and I know sometimes the competition, but I just want you to know, you are all very much appreciated. Now, the budget. Mike said what he started, when I started back in two thousand, we were just un- Mike, you are older than I am, so, um, but, it was just under a billion, this year, we are exceeding seven billion dollars, now that is general, federal, and other dollars. And for general fund dollars, we are over two billion dollars, that is your taxpayer dollars that are going into the system to support the state. So, you know, in that magnanimous amount, in my mind, and I'll have to go back to what Mike talked about, you know, the last two years, we have had so much federal dollars, you know it, you've been able to bet some, and that's always the question in my mind, how much of this is really going to be around, because supposedly, federal dollars are one-time dollars. And I will tell you, they are not one-time dollars, because programs start, you have growth in those areas, and how do you continue that? Um, with appropriations this year, I'm really looking forward to the group, um, in the Senate, I only have one new Senate appropriate. The other two that are joining us, they were appropriations, I'm back, it's the House that has quite a few new members, so it's gonna be a learning curve for those individuals that are coming in, but we're very excited, my, um, counterpart is, uh, Representative Mike Derby, he is from Rapid City, and way back in the Janklow administration, he was Vice Chair of Appropriate. So, he's got some knowledge base on that. You know, I'm a data person and number, and I, I just want to say at this point, when we look at how much is going out, right now, thirty-eight percent of our budget is for health, human, and social services, thirty-two point four is for state aid to education, twelve point three is higher ed, six is corrections, four point two is for legislature, UJS, PUC, um, one point one is for ag and natural resources and GFP, and the remainder is six percent government. So, the big two are still out there that are thriving factors of what we're doing. Um, I think, um, in the discussion, and Mike and I have been talking, you know, the biggest issue probably right now we're facing is the sales tax on food. And that will certainly be a topic out there for discussion, I'm still trying to figure out, did ten new people come to South Dakota and they're spending the money, or are ten of us just paying more for goods and services and raising those dollars, so, trying to delve down into that, you know, that's the big thing, if we take a hundred million or a hundred and four, whatever that number is approximated for, that's ongoing dollars, so that means there's no replacement, other than the perception, or what we're being told is that our economy is growing, and we will be able to continue on, and we're gonna make so much more, we're gonna come in about three hundred million more, but there are some other things that are happening out there, and so that will sustain us, I do not believe it will, we, we're flush with cash right now, or with dollars, state dollars for twenty-four, and maybe twenty-five, but after that, things are going to change dramatically, because things are gonna happen, we're gonna have a recession, some type, whatever that is, and then how are we going to rebound as a state of South Dakota? So, those are things that are in caution out there. As far as the five percent, you know, she just did a global, so we've got to see what we've got there. Um, this morning, we had a conversation, and Mr. Kendall was there, and we talked about spec ed, and I've asked for some I think that's an important piece, you know, in this whole, and, um, Senator Jim Boland, like him or not, he's really my education guy, he's been on approach before, and I believe he was on the summer study that did the spec ed and the revision that they did at that point, so I'm gonna look to him, I've got some projects for him that I want him to do to look in that arena, he's got the knowledge base, I don't have in that area, so that, he can give us a picture. And like I said, we got a lot of new people, and so that's gonna be really important, how to bring them up to speed, and not to, in a sense, reassess or reevaluate everything we have done beforehand, because now I've got a new set of eyes, new set of eyes are good, but we cannot negate how we've got to the point we have. I think the other thing that we're talking about is corrections, you saw that, where we're talking about a new women's prison in Rapid City, and then the other area that we're looking at is a new, um, male unit over at the Hill Falls, and that'll, that's a lot of money that we're talking about, so we're gonna step that out. As far as, you know, anything else with education, those are the two, and I think Mike mentioned the voucher program that they're talking about, didn't hear much about it, so, I don't know the devil of the details and what we're looking at that, but, you know, if you look at my voting record, I have not supported that, and I don't plan to others, but I think there will be other bills that will come in for suggesting some help for education. A couple other things in some of the behavioral health services, there was a summer study on juvenile services, I don't know if anybody participated, you were in that. Erin Tobin was on that group too, was not, she's been communicating with me, trying to find what are some options, how we can get more dollars, you know, and I don't know if the final recommendations have surfaced, or I've read any of that, but that certainly impacts, I think, on that not, like I said, you were on that, I, I'm just So, that's the picture that's out there, there's a lot of learning that's gonna go on, a lot of vetting, going down, doing a lot of finding out what all this means for the taxpayers of South Dakota, and how we continue to do the good things that we're doing for citizens, so, now it's your turn to tell us what you would like us.
Um, well, thank you both of you for addressing the foster, um, kid scholarship program, that was gonna be one of my first questions as well, and is it truly a scholarship, and um, we appreciate you, uh, you know, being open to, uh, you know, not supporting that, uh, you know, we have lots of data on vouchers, not, uh, helping, uh, education, and honestly, fifteen million dollars that gets taken away is a huge impact, so, thanks for addressing that. Um, Gene, we, uh, yeah, Senator Hunoff, we have, um, uh, uh, we, uh, it's really great to have you on appropriations, um, for our county, um, in your history there, um, Mike, what will committees, will you be on, will you be on the education again, I know you've been in the past?
The other thing you need to realize, Mike is Speaker of the House, that is a key leadership position over there, so, Yankton County is well positioned to have Mike over there, and I'm sitting on appropriations, so, I'm hoping that will, will help us as we move along, but this is a great thing for Yankton. But, um, that certainly is.
Legislature. Good things done, because there's gonna be some very divisive, uh, subjects this year that we're gonna have to deal with, and hopefully, you know, we'll have a legislature, legislators who don't have the opinion like I've seen in the past, where you have to have the whole apple. You know, sometimes half an apple this year is better than no apple, uh, and a lot of times, you see people, that's their opinion, and then there are other factors, and it's either all or nothing, and I don't think we get things done doing it that way.
Questions or comments from our other board members?
Oh, I was just gonna say, thank you for your guys' time for coming and speaking with us, and always being open to supporting education.
Yeah, thank you for your service too, and the years you've served in legislature, a couple things I want to say, pardon, pardon my voice. One is, uh, of course, funding for us is, is crucial, to be able to justly compensate our staff, and to properly teach our students. In that same vein, I'm extremely concerned about what's been going on with the Governor's Committee on Social Studies. And I'm hoping that main, we can maintain the integrity of what we do in education, and let educators be the ones who decide what goes on in the classroom, in terms of what, how a curriculum is built. And so I want to, I'm unsure what role legislature will play in that manner, but I would really want to encourage you just to, and any, and, and by the way, you both are open to me whenever I've texted your emails, you, I really appreciate that. But I'd also be very open to any kind of comments you'd like to receive from anybody who's been in the education business, as long as I have, for example, because we have some, you know, very, when we teach our kids in the classroom, we want them to teach them what's happened in the world, and as the old saying goes, so we don't repeat it. And I think that's, that's extremely important, and to just be concerned about making somebody upset because you teach it in the classroom, I don't think is an appropriate guidance for how we deal with our curriculum. I want to thank you for listening to that.
People who are proposing the most legislation changes haven't been in the classroom for decades. And, and we all know what a difference has been since we've been in school, and how it is now, I mean, there have been so many changes, that, you know, it's not the same, that they all thinks, a lot of them think that that's, you know, it's the same way it was when they went to school, and that's just not the case.
And I don't know how the processes that are real, other than I know they're having the hearings across the state, and I believe there's some even drink session and after session, if I've got that right, now, and I believe these are rules, right?
Your rules.
So at the end of the day, they will show up before the Committee of Internals Rules, which I'll be chairing most likely, so, um, that will be at the end of the day, but I'm hoping, as you're saying, on this process, and like I said, I have no idea, I don't sit on education, and I don't know if anybody's looking at that or, or whatever, but I don't know when that's gonna be, but.
Go here for me.
I just want to say something that Mike said, that, you know, when you do send and say, you know, vote no, it does help not being a teacher, or not knowing what, why to say no, because it's really, you know, Mike's been a school board member, so he can do that, you know, I'm a nurse here, I'll do anything on healthcare, because I understand, but I, if you're telling me no, give me, you know, why it might be a no, or what I should consider, because then when I'm trying to, you know, present an opinion on it, either for or against it, at least I have the facts out there, and that, that's what it is, that's, that's really, don't do a ten-page like he said, but just, you can all be succinct to just say, this is why you need to go yea or nay on this, and, and that helps in, in providing the information and debating it on the floor.
And you know, you can check with the LRC, I mean, any particular bills, you know, how they're going, and where they are in the process, what amendments have been made, because you can have those situations where a bill starts out one way, and it ends up completely the opposite way, and so you have to be careful about that. And I was always too, think it's important that you look and see who the, who the sponsors of the bill are, because a lot of times, that can give you an indication too of some of the things that might, you know, what is the purpose, or what is the, why are they, why are they bringing this bill, and you, sometimes you get an idea by looking at that. But now with the new electronic type of things, you know, people can add their names, take their names off, you know, they can hoghouse a bill, or you have a bill, and it's completely different, and so you do have to keep, you know, keep track of that thing. So, any help you can give us is very much appreciated.
Excuse me, regarding the social studies standards, if that comes up, and I think that it will in the legislature, I do have data for both of you. We did a parent survey, and then we also surveyed staff, so I can provide that information to you, and Jerome and I are already working on the special ed data that you requested, and as you both know, whenever you need something, just ask, and it will get you the data, and I want to thank both of you for emailing, cell phone calls, all the things that you do to stay in contact, so, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
And don't be afraid to call between, um, you know, eight o'clock at night and, uh, four-thirty in the morning, because that's when I get up to exercise. So if you call me anytime during that time, you're gonna find, I'll probably get in my old gel room, but that's really the best time to get ahold if you want to talk to me, is between that time, because you have long days, and so, and I don't mind calls, in fact, I had somebody older than me call the other night at ten-fifteen, concerned about some assessments, and it was like, oh, wow.
But if you call at four fif- four-thirty, you call, just leave a message.
No, I take my cell phone with me when I exercise, so.
You might be knowing you want to talk.
Right, right. We're gonna do it on this account.
Uh, just as an FYI, uh, Just as an FYI, Wade Poganey is retiring. There was a message that went out today, and I think he's going to finish till June, but this will be his last legislative session. And I'd just like to publicly thank him. He's put a lot of work into public education and lobbying and being a great advocate. I know Kathy, you served with him, you were on that board, so just want to thank Wade.
For him.
Yeah, no, the big shoes to fill there, so. Any other comments or questions? Thirty-eight days, is that average, normal? That, I feel like it's.
Well, we can't go more than forty, right?
Yeah, okay, so it's sugar.
Do you think about that, to do all that in that short period of time is a lot of work.
It's incredible, so.
Yeah.
It, it is, but then it's not bad either because you're forced to get it done. You're not wasting time, and everybody's on the same timeframe. So, you know, it, it does put the pressure on the legislature. But, you know, we see states that have full-time session legislators, they have part-time or whatever, and we're one of the shortest, and we get our work done. And that's the main thing, that's the whole idea. You have too much time and too many bills come, and they're all, right?
I feel like I need to start singing that elementary song about bills and amendments and. So anyway, I want to echo whatever, what's been said here. We're very fortunate to have both of you as leaders for our county and in the state. So thank you for all you do and how effective you are at communicating and getting back to all this, so.
Thank you.
You all have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
All right, moving on, we have number nine, our Curriculum and Technology. It is Computer Science Week, so excited to hear about this.
Hello. So last week was Computer Science Education Week. And with that, our elementary learners, they, all teachers were emailed out the board that, the choice board that is in black was the Computer Science Education Week Choice Board. And so what teachers can do with this is for younger learners, they can do the activities all together. Or there's lots of different activities. There are digital ones and unplugged activities so that you don't need any technology to celebrate or even read alouds. So those can be brought up on the Promethea panel, or lots of the upper grade teachers assign those choice boards through Google Classroom. So kids can, they can do some of the activities there. All of, so it was a preschool and junior K one, kindergarten, first grade, second, third, and fourth, five. And when all of those activities are tied to state technology standards. So, and the teachers get an email list so that they know that those tech standards are being met through those activities. Just try to take a little something off the plate of finding something to do, but still meeting those standards. And so that's what a Computer Science Education Week board looks like. And then we have the Holiday Choice Board. It's themed with STEAM. So instead of STEM, you know, they, STEAM is really important to get that art piece in there. And so those are various activities too that get assigned out or used whole group. Lots of different unplugged or plugged in things, so, yeah, they're fun. Oh, and if we click on that, will you click on the Hour of Code map, please?
Where's that?
Yep. So this is really exciting. So Hour of Code, that's the big place where Computer Science Education Week is. They do a lot of things to celebrate it. And if we scroll down, Yankton is on the map with all the different Hour of Code events in the world. So we are one of the little, we are, each elementary school has a dot, which is kind of exciting for kids to get to see where, where Yankton is. And that we are, we are on the map for celebrating coding in Computer Science Education Week. And then because of the weather last week, I was going to have pictures of kids that, when I was going into a couple of classrooms. But, so keep your eye out tomorrow and reschedule to be in a classroom, and I'll post pictures on Thrill Share of some kids working on those coding activities. Any questions?
No questions. Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. All right, next up is our Mental Wellness Opportunities Through Our Safe Return to School Plan.
Hello, it was great to listen to the instructional one with Ally presenting. So, um, all right, so I am here to review our Safe Return to School Plan, which is a requirement since COVID. So we are, our second year, it's on our website at the very bottom. You can click on it and see the live document all the time. This was approved by the school board in August and still doing really well for us. We haven't actually made any changes to the documents since August, so the plan has been pulling out. And tonight I am just going to highlight again Section Four with Mental Wellness. Just as a reminder, the plan does outline our school health and safety, our academics, special education, operations, and workforce management. And these are all a result of different scenarios that we've had to think through because of the pandemic and effects on our staff and students. If you scroll down, bring your eyes to Section Four here, I'm just going to highlight some of these components. So Section Four outlines the support for our students, families, and staff by the YSD counselors as well as other mental health services. The first section, four point one and four point two, describe how our counselors are supporting our student, staff, and families on an ongoing basis. So different opportunities if any student, staff, or families need support. And then Section four point three describes the six oh five strong program at the state. It was created by a partnership of South Dakota Department of Social Services, Department of Health Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota, and the two one one Health Line Center. Six oh five strong is a free resource offering listening and support to school district employees, children, and families to help relieve the stress and anxiety that has been caused by the ongoing pandemic. At the bottom of this section are also links to the various resources such as the American School Counselor Association, the six oh five strong, as well as a curated list of resources from our YSD staff, put together, for our YSD staff, put together by our counselors. I would encourage all students, families, and staff to utilize these resources and contact any of our amazing school counselors if they have any questions. And then if you have any questions or comments regarding our Safe Return to School Plan, any section, you are always able to reach out to your building principal. Any questions?
Also, I want to add that our overall employees have the access to EAP program as well.
Thank you.
Their insurance.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, next up is Policy. This will be a first reading of the Graduation Requirements Policy. We have Mr. D. and Mrs. Reyes.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we bring to you just for the first reading of our graduation requirements and this in policy. We have started looking at this last spring. We got together, then we formed a committee with the following people within the memo there, with our department heads, our curriculum director. We had a couple of school board members on here to talk really about our, our graduation requirements, what the state requires, and then how we go into really and discuss our directives. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Reyes here real quick. I'm going to work off the document of the non-strike through. Yep, yep. And, and you, when you're going through the document and you're looking, you can look through the strike through. The strike through ones are, it probably looks a little bit overbearing. There's a lot of things that were moved around or we put into some of the things that the state has required for us as well. So I'll let Mrs. Reyes talk about that first.
Thank you. So it was just time to look through this and do some updates. The first thing we did, if you're looking through the strike through, was we got rid of the standard advanced and distinguished. The state is no longer using those certificates, they have updated those. So we crossed those out, and then what we did, we went through the twenty-two credits that are required for graduation, and we put in the new twenty eighteen what had been updated. And then as well as added where in the Yankton High School curriculum you can find those requirements. So for example, the American Lit component is incorporated embedded into our English group. So we kind of spelled that out in those various sections. Then the next thing we did was go back, and instead of those certificates, the advanced and distinguished and basic, we put in the base diploma, which are the twenty eighteen, the twenty eighteen update for that base diploma, as well as the different endorsements that our students can receive. So the advanced, advanced career, and advanced honors, and we highlighted the differences in each of those endorsements as opposed to the base diploma.
Just one note with that as well is, wow, last month we were here talking about our school report card, and the question was asked about the endorsements. So that has updated those and what that endorsement looks like and how you, how a student can earn any of those endorsements as well.
Pardon me, are those endorsements on the diploma or the transcript or what?
They are, so we are notating those on the diplomas.
And transcript.
And transcript, yes.
Okay, so, and then when we went through, whoops, excuse me, when we went through with the endorsements, we also have our directives that were in line with the things that we have done as the Yankton High School for many years, and they've been really, really great directives. So we didn't want to necessarily change a lot of those because they have been very solid for us. But we did tweak a few of them to help with some of the things that we're dealing with with our Board of Regents, our secondary, our post-secondary schools as well. So in going through those directives there, we, we really have kept those under B, the general directives, very similar to what we've had. The big thing that I want to bring your attention to is, would be on page four here, is the High School College Credit Directives. And what we've done, we've added this in, and we felt that we needed to spell these out to understand with what we're talking about. So we have our.
I'm going to interrupt just a second. Is it number four under B?
Under four I. On page four, let me go up here.
Am I on the right?
Four I, right here.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, thanks for, I didn't, I didn't scroll down there, so. So what we really wanted to do is we wanted to spell out what does it mean if I'm taking an AP or an advanced placement class? What does it mean if I'm taking a concurrent course? And what does it mean if I'm taking a dual credit? Our advanced placement classes and our concurrent courses sometimes go hand in hand. And concurrent course means that we, students are earning a high school credit and a college credit from a teacher at Yankton High School. That's what the word concurrent means, okay, a concurrent course. A dual credit is a college course that's taken independently by a student from a Board of Region, university, or technical school. So these courses, no matter what, if it's a concurrent or a dual credit, they will be transcribed on the student's transcript. So what they could do is, and we've had this for many years, where students are graduating Yankton High School, and they're taking some credits on their transcript to college with them, with some of their generals that they've, that they've completed. The thing that we've added in there as well is our dual credit with that independently of where we've talked about those students having those opportunities to take, whether it's from a technical institution or our Board of Region school as well. So those are the things of what we're looking at. And you can see A, B, C, D with all of those. We really just highlighted some things that are very similar to the directives up in the front. But I do want to just point your attention to F, G, and H, the dual credit.
Can you scroll down a little bit?
I'm sorry.
I mean, I could pull them back if I saw.
No, no, I, I forget I'm driving as well, so. So if we're looking at, F, dual credit will not be approved if it's already offered, same course concurrently. The dual credit course grade will be transcribed in the Yankton High School transcript as a half a credit. And the dual credits received outside of those offered concurrently will only count as elective credits. So that's something that is very similar to what we have always done, but we really came in and we wanted to spell those out within the areas of, of we have. Now, when you're looking at these, and we've had many conversations about this within the counseling department, even with our department heads, there's always a certain scenario, and we can play a lot of different scenarios of, okay, does this make sense and how does this look? So we have a lot of those, and we've had a lot of different conversations about that. We've had, we've had for many years a tremendous amount of success with our concurrent courses. The dual credit courses with what we have, we haven't seen a lot of that, but it has increased a little bit since our recent pandemic when we had a lot of things go online. So those are opportunities for students to, to take. So what we wanted to do with, with updating this policy is looking at different areas that are going to benefit both our students as well as our staff when they are exploring different opportunities within their course catalog. The thing that we, that we have is that when, in next month, we will bring along with this our course catalog that reflects the, some of the changes that we have, that we're proposing tonight. And once this gets approved at, at your guys', we would then take a look at approving our course offerings, and we will bring that to you each and every year like we've always done in the past, so. Ms. Reyes, anything else that you have? We'd open it up for questions.
Yeah, can you give an example of an AP class, a concurrent class, and a dual credit class?
So.
How they're different?
Yep, so an AP class that we currently offer is AP Lit and Comp. So a student is able to take that concurrently, and we have a tremendous partnership with Mount Marty, where they are working on their high school English, fourth year senior English credit, as well as their comp one-on-one class, where they're earning a college credit there as well as a high school credit there. So that would be our AP slash concurrent class that we offer at the high school. A dual credit class would be an independent class. One thing that we do not offer at Yankton is psychology right now. So that would be a course that is on, that's offered through the Board of Regents that a student could sign up for and take duly while they're enrolled at Yankton High School. And that class could come back in as an elective that we transcribe on the transcript, both at high school, and then they would also earn that credit for their college credit as well.
So I feel like dual credit is used a lot inappropriately where it's more concurrent, would that be?
We, we have.
I mean, just not, I mean, in the general population.
Yes, and we are, the majority of our students are working through the concurrent program, which has been very successful for us. The dual credit is something that's offered, but it's necessary, it's an online class. So there's not necessarily through Yankton High School as well, there's, they're working through the Board of Regents. But our concurrent credits are also, they have in-person and in, with their teacher as well, while earning that college credit and high school credit.
I promise I wouldn't ask you questions. I break that promise, but Dr. Strickus, I both sat in those meetings on the, and Mrs. Reyes, and everybody else that was there for all the great input. I do want to say that as far as the dual credit, that they were trying to do the best we can to check the integrity of our courses, make sure the courses that we teach at Yankton High School are viable, which we know they are. In fact, in many cases, I feel the class teaching at Yankton High School are, are probably as good, if not better, than some of the classes taught in college. So by graduate students, for example. However, I just want to say this, that we have more than one AP class, obviously. We have several, and those classes are taught concurrently with Mount Marty, many of them are. Not every student takes AP Lit Comp, for example. Does the concurrent credit correct?
Yes, that's correct, so.
It'd be a question to do the model.
Yeah, that's correct. Not everybody, the students have a choice to take the credit or as well as they can take the advanced placement test to do that. It's not required, there's an opportunity for students to do that. So it's not, it's not necessarily a requirement to earn the college credit with it as well. And there's oftentimes, there's some that, that don't do that for various reasons. So we give them that option.
And again, thank you, Mr. Ratzke, for that process.
This has been, this has been a fantastic learning experience for me the last eight months as well as we've worked together with our department heads, our counseling. It's been great to have Dr. Shrinquist and Mr. Frantl on that to have some great discussions with where we're going. And this proposed policy sets us up great for the future with what we want to do within our graduation requirements, so.
I have one other comment I want to make. To Franny's point about maybe there being some confusion with the dual credit, concurrent, and AP placement. This, the wording has changed. I think that's where it's gonna be different for people. Because we, when I was high school principal and Dr. Jacky, it was in fact dual credit. That's what we offered and we had AP option, you know, if kids wanted to take the AP exam. But part of this change is due really to the Board of Regents changing terminology. And that's really the big reason for having this change here tonight.
I think sometimes too, the dual credit thought was back then is that they got credit for high school and they got credit at a college level, so it was dual because they ended up with it twice. So I think that's where part of that confusion comes in there.
And as this has grown, the Board of Regents, as Dr. Kittle mentioned, has changed the terminology with this, so we want to reflect that, so. As we wait to, for a vote on this for next month, if there's any questions from any board members or any parents or anybody else, please feel free to contact us. We would, you know, if you have any questions or anybody asks you, please direct them towards us. We would love to answer those questions and talk through certain scenarios because we've done a lot of that and we always want to continue to keep that door open and would look for other input as well, so. I guess it adds up. Tonight, this is just the first reading. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, before we adjourn, I just want to wish everyone a great and positive end to the semester and a happy holiday season to everyone. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We adjourn.